It's now six o'clock on the October 17th and I'm gonna call to order the regular select board meeting. First item is to approve minutes from, from a few things. First is regular select board meeting last time, which was October 3rd. Minutes, uh, yeah, let's do that one. Should we, unless, we could do them all as one go or does anybody have any comments?
I was in there a couple of meetings, so.
So you don't have a lot of comments?
No. And I can't really vote for the minutes because I don't have the clicker.
You're gonna abstain because you don't know what happened. You weren't there.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's do them as a.
You missed a good time.
So, all right, so let's do them as a slate. So we have the regular select board, minutes from regular select board meeting of October 3rd, minutes from the town plan public hearing, October 7th, minutes of a special select board meeting, October 7th. Um, so.
And then the 16th.
And I want to add the special meeting of October 16th.
And the special meeting of October 16th as well.
Yeah.
Right. Then that we had by email already.
Yeah.
Right, okay. So as a whole slate, could we, did somebody want?
So moved.
Move to accept them?
Second.
All right. So any discussion, changes, or amendments to the minutes?
I didn't see anything.
They were good, thank you. So all in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have one abstention over here from the person who abstains. For lack of knowledge.
Okay.
For lack of first hand.
I could vote on the regular meeting.
Yeah.
Do partial vote?
Yeah. A one quarter vote.
Twenty-five percent.
Yeah. All right, next up is set adjust agenda. Do we have to subtract anything on this thing? Nobody has anything?
Uh-uh.
All right, let's roll with the agenda we have. Communication from the audience, we don't, everybody's here for a reason. Hi Doug. Um, so, all right, next is town manager report given by Sean Fielder.
Okay, so we did finalize the water sewer rate schedule for the current operations period and that has been provided with the bills, clerk's office just recently released. And I would call everybody's attention to in that item as well. We have developed a frequently asked questions item and that information is, was included in bills. And then also what we've done, so folks can access the information, it is up on the town's website as of now as well. So quite a few folks involved with that process and appreciate their involvement, so.
I just wanna say thank you, I got my bill and I like, I appreciate having those frequently asked questions in there, that's good.
Okay, good. You know, we'll modify those as we go along and just try to, you know, forgetting getting new or additional questions, try to have it, you know, if somebody's thinking that, there's more than one person that has that question most likely, so we, I wanna make sure folks are informed. So that's the objective. Uh, we had recently worked with a vast official, I say we, it's Eric and I, we're actually involved, Eric mentioned this in a previous meeting, on the LVRT Bridge 38 and 40, we do have contractor selected for redecking and railing of Bridge 38 and 40 and VAST is in charge of setting up the contract. We saw draft today actually and they'll probably have a contract in place this next week with Bo and Cody is the contractor that was selected. And the information is that the contract specifies or will specify work to be completed by June of 2020. We anticipate some work on this late fall and obviously it just depends on the severity of winter, if they'll be able to do anything through the winter season, so.
Did, I didn't see the results, must've come in somewhere near our wait up.
Yeah, they were within, um, they were, it was a little bit above what our design engineers had specified, but it was within the parameters of the broader project funding, which is NBRC grant as well, Northern Border Regional Commission. So with the pricing we've had on their design and the pricing we're seeing for the quote on the work, the job will be completed within the parameters we anticipated on the cost. So that's, that's good news.
Meaning that, it's a roughly, I think it's a $200,000 NBRC grant, they required a $50,000 match.
Yep.
So we, it's looking like for 250, we're gonna have, we'll get both the design and the construction in, in that amount.
Oh, okay.
And, and the other thing that was kinda nice about the bids, even though they were higher than the design engineers had guessed, they were all really close to each other.
Competitive, yep.
So it gave some confidence that these are all pretty, they're probably all pretty real numbers everybody sat and they were pretty exact two dollar figures.
Um, have been working on various details associated with the Yellow Burn project and the, this was announced in the previous hearing meeting, but note it now, the pretty significant milestone, the town did officially acquire the property yesterday. So that milestone is complete, closing occurred yesterday. We're obviously continued work with the planning team, that's involving various agencies as well as town employees and folks in my office. And next steps are grants with Economic Development Authority, Vermont Economic Development Authority and Vermont Community Development Program. All applications due by early November, so we've got a lot that's gonna be occurring in this next couple week period to advance the project. For, everybody could see kind of in the background here that we've got a couple of the icons up, you know, about the lay of the land, if you will. And I think what we will have, I'm anticipating that we'll have the executive summary available as a reference item, so that would be posted if anybody, any questions, they could go see the reference item. On the Elbon Burn project itself, there is work behind the scenes now to have a dedicated website, but that's not quite ready to go at this phase. So shifting gears, did have meeting in the manager's office with Tom, Ken LaCass, and Casey looking over water and wastewater capital projects. And then, so what we're trying to do on that is just look three to five to 10 years out as far as what we have coming at us, what our needs are for water and wastewater system. Immediately following, had a check-in meeting with our engineers, Aldridge and Elliott, with Wayne Elliott, principal partner for the firm. And what we're doing is just really trying to, we're trying to continue the approach the town's had for many years, which is to be ahead of it on the capital planning, so we're just continuing that process. So we're at a phase now where we get a, we're just reviewing or sequencing and just trying to get some of the priorities in order and then match that up with, okay, do we have the capital funds available or do we need to bond? You know, these are some of the things that we'll be getting into this next three to six month period.
Just thinking about water planning, we keep talking about taking a walk up to those springs off of Reno Road.
Yep. So that'll be, that's definitely on the task list, action item list moving forward.
Yeah. Tom, have you been up there? You know what those, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're familiar.
Yeah. There's one thing that bothered me and John about those, I mean, they're still in use. People at the bottom of Reno Road are still using those springs, but they actually wanted us to sort of like drill down into one of them. So we didn't know whether, if we drilled down into one of those springs, we might lose, you know, part of the water, so that was kinda hesitant on that part, but.
Yeah. The water source that we can explore anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
Twenty, I think it was 20 springs up there that all feed into one.
A lot of springs.
Yeah.
So we have had, we have progress continuing on the Bridgman Roof Project and a really positive thing is the Spates Construction with their, one of their subs actually got all the main girder beams hung this week, so those main girders are in place for the roof. And the next phase would be the sheets, if you will. So the main point here is they're on target with their schedule at this phase and, you know, we've had, Tom's been involved with this, of course, and we have regular communications ongoing with A&amp;E, Spates, the state of Vermont, and some of their subcontractors. So we're looking really good at this phase is the important thing to note here.
Did the floor get refinished?
Not yet, no.
And that's being evaluated as per to this, so that's, it's in the queue.
Yep.
Yep. In case somebody's wondering what the question was, there were a few spots that were discovered in the floor that for lack of a better phrase are punky and for a reservoir from 1940, it's not unanticipated. So the, the expert of concrete for A&amp;E wasn't too concerned, but obviously now's the time for us to make that adjustment and make that repair. So we'll be in good shape with that. You know, we're gonna have effectively brand new reservoir when we get this thing buttoned up, which at this phase is anticipated for the first part of December. If everything holds, we'd be back online by, you know, December time. So that would be good.
Thanks.
Last meeting, we talked a little bit about the animal control officer position and the, the good news to report there is, have talked to John Longe, he is able to continue to serve in the role. We had some communication issues that were going on there for a couple week period. So he is gonna provide service through the end of October at a minimum. I didn't get a chance to nail this down with the clerk's office, but he is in a position this next week to issue the dog warrants that we have, so I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. And I'll keep the communications going with the clerk's office, so we get that taken care of.
Good.
To take part in the traffic task force meeting, traffic safety, pedestrian safety, I think, I may not have the title of the task force accurate, but those meetings are ongoing. Most recently, Wiz and Sherry are involved with those. And most recently, Doug Morton joined us from NVDA. So my perspective is, you know, the focus at this phase is obtaining feedback from various stakeholders and in this instance, it's the downtown village business owners, just some of their feedback about concerns, what works, what doesn't. So the group's doing a good job of involving those folks and just getting, you know, some feedback from, on the ground, if you will. And also reviewing information from previous studies on the subject, which includes one from Locomotion and the larger one, if you will, the more thorough was from NVDA from about 10 years back. So we're, you know, we're looking and updating and more to come from the task force as far as visions and suggestions that would then be presented to the select board. Hopefully I don't get out of line speaking on behalf of the task force, I'm just, that's the perspective. I did have one trash complaint issue that we had to deal with here earlier this week and just would note the proper only, property owner, excuse me, dealt with it in a timely fashion. Um, we, previous meeting, the select board had advised that we wanna get the Carrier Road property, which is the, it's the settlement for the estate of the Patton family, buttoned up by October 19th. And it looks like we're on target to see the personal possessions off the property by that timeline, so I'm keeping close contact with the estate, probate, assigned estate attorney on that. And we saw some pretty significant movement on removal of items this past weekend. We do have liability informs in place and, you know, protecting the town's interest as a part of these processes. So Tom and I talked about this a little bit today, once we get to this phase where we know the personal possessions are out, then we'll take immediate steps to continue to clean up the property, if you will, coming into the winter season. So I think we're in a pretty good position, hopefully we'll see some, you know, we'll see the next phase here pretty quickly.
If Danny were here, I'd ask about the trail, if that, but.
Yeah, and I didn't necessarily note that here, but, you know, obviously if we get this buttoned up in this next week and, you know, if there's anything else we need to move, then we can talk about if we wanna do a reorientation on the trail and I think that would be in our hands.
Yeah, exactly. And I don't think it's a huge reorientation.
No, there's just one larger tractor trailer body that's left.
I would think back and have to take, take it down and just turn and I think it'd be a pretty well straight shot from there.
Yep.
So it wouldn't make those two 90 degree jobs?
Right.
Okay.
Be sweep and turn, if you will, I think.
Nice.
So we could move the barricade we have there where the, where the actual road actually goes into the property and that could be a straight shot right up to the trail. There really wouldn't be any work at all, really. We'd just have to stake it out and just take down that back fence and I think that'd be the end of it. Then they could run it for the winter.
And that could potentially be done before winter?
Yeah. If we were down, down there, we gotta clean up the garbage, I mean, it'd only take a minute, probably just take down that fence, so.
Tom said he'd pick it up all by hand.
Okay, perfect.
So the last thing I wanna report on is the, this came up on a previous meeting that we had to do the state mandated PFOS, PFOA testing on our source. And the, the good news there is we have done our testing for its 18 different constituents that are the categories that come, or the, the chemical items you would be looking for under the category of the PFOS, PFOA contaminant list. The state by executive order made a significant change on a maximum contaminant level, which means it's a health enforceable standard if you exceed a certain value. The important thing for the customers to know is that for these 18 chemicals, every one of them was a no detect from the Hardwick Public Water Supply. So it really, it's illustrating for this particular contaminant, it's a really good product at the source. Again, for this particular contaminant, so.
Great.
This is one of these items that the state is reporting results up to an area and we'll get it up on the website, we just haven't had an opportunity yet. So folks are aware, we have taken care of this, done our diligence and the results are the best result you could get. So just so everybody's aware. That's all I have.
Well, those, ultimately, do those results also end up in our, the annual?
Yeah.
Water quality testing results that come in the bills?
Yeah, that's correct. So when we go to our consumer conference report is due, I'm sorry, I've lost track more, I think, I wanna say May 1, but I might be off by a month, so we would act, we would definitely be reporting that.
That comes out.
But we'll note it in advance, you know, we don't wanna wait, you know, if we have an issue, we're gonna report it right away, I wanna be clear about this. If there's something that's a health issue, sorry to bring this up, but as an example, when we had our boil water notice, I mean, that's immediate because there's an acute, an acute health potential problem, we're gonna notify right away. Something where you have a no detect, you're not necessarily obligated to report that, but it's important for people to know, we don't have a problem, we've done our diligence. That's just as important, knowing to notify folks. So it will be in the consumer conference report as well.
Next.
Next spring.
Yep.
That's how I answer that one.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, next up is the road foreman report. So Tom, tell us, tell us what your crew's been up to.
Dealing with that thing on Glenside.
Oh, yeah.
But we did finally manage to get it unplugged.
So give a little description for those who haven't been following along at home.
Catch basin from hell.
That's the title.
Yes. So this started like a week ago, after we had a good heavy, heavy rain. Powerway up on Glenside from the intersection from the bottom, the pipe, the old clay pipe blew apart. So water was coming out of the ground there, then down below and just, oh, probably another 25, 30 feet down below, the water was boiling out of the road there. So we knew we had two problems there. So we ended up digging it out and tried jetting it. Well, we couldn't get it with our jetter. So we finally got a hold of Minos. Minos came up, I think it was that Wednesday and it was about four o'clock. We started trying to jet it from the top side, couldn't get it, you could only go down like 50 feet. Then we went up from the riverside, we went up 182 feet. Pulled a jetter back line back out, re-jet it again with a different nozzle, got his line stuck. So then he asked me if we could start digging and I basically said, well, where do you wanna dig? I have no idea where this line goes, cause our forefathers in 1920 probably laid this line. So we finally managed to get the backhoe down over the bank, in towards the river so I can yank on a line. So we got that out, so by seven, 7:30 that night, I think we got it done. So then he said he was gonna bring camera up on Thursday, couldn't do it, cause the camera wasn't working. So he brought it up Friday morning, we could only go up 82 feet with it, because then we started getting a little bit of material in the pipe. So we decided to dig a test hole by haze there in that grassy area between Car Wash and State Highway. Well, when I did that, figured maybe we can locate it there. Well, I found a six inch water main that feeds out the hydrant, then I found a one inch water main that feeds the car wash.
Neither one of those is your storm drain.
No, so we buried that all back up. So over the, over the weekend and holiday, then said, well, we only got one other choice left, put another speed bump in the bottom of Glenside. So that's what we ended up doing. So we dug that up Monday and I think by what, 1:00, I think 1:30 in the afternoon?
Yep. Just because I showed up.
Yeah, just cause Sean showed up and said, dang it, this thing's gonna let loose. So it did let loose, so we finally got that. So we buried it that night, then the next day we went back, laid some brand new cover up and then I had to catch basin over at the town garage. All we had to do was just kinda bore another hole into it. So we got that set in place, got the other line into it and so far, so good, it's been working and it does not have a cover on it, but we do got cones around it and everything else. The cover should be done, I ordered one today, should be done tomorrow, so hopefully by in the early morning, I can put a cover on it with catch basin top to it, so we can still access it. So, yeah.
Bear in mind the line, best estimate is the line goes under the gas tanks, so it's one of those things where you can't just dig.
It's crazy, cause it looks like the line heads off towards the middle of the car wash, but the outlet to it is actually behind the garage. And when we go up through it, it goes up through and then you can see it turning back towards the car wash way, so we don't know where it dips down or turns this way or that way, we just, no idea. But that's probably one of the things that we should probably plan on here one in the future, cause where we were jetting on top, that cover does not look too good down inside, so. But it is flowing, it's working, we won't have a skate ring hopefully this winter, so we'll have to keep going.
Ultimately, next time we're thinking about stormwater runoff improvements, that should rise higher on the list.
Yeah, and.
And it would be if we just run a brand new?
Yeah.
Line somehow and probably do some sort of a settlement thing or something?
Yeah, cause the only thing I could think of is, well, the shortest route would probably be running it over towards the Village Motel, cause the state has a, I think it's an 18 inch or two foot cover that runs, you know, in where the old ponds used to be?
Yeah.
Right there, that runs towards the river itself. Because if not, then we're gonna have to run it down the side of the road, go through, across from Hardwick Market there?
Yeah.
To that one there. But that catch basin there, which we were thinking about going to, that only has an eight inch pipe.
And you might overload it.
Yeah, there's no way that's gonna take that flow. So you'd have to redo that catch basin to the bottom of that catch basin, then the one across the road, then the one that really leads out back up, Hardwick Market, so.
Yeah.
Interesting anyways. So, yeah, so, so, yeah, that's been fun. So by the end of the, well, while me and a couple guys were doing that, the other guys have been out grading, hauling gravel and stuff, trying to button up the roads for the winter and stuff. Today, we got all the tires changed on the trucks, where we've been in the process of doing, doing that, getting that ready. Trucks are going out now for getting inspections and stuff like that on them.
Are all the trucks running?
Yeah, sort of, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Where's, Pearlie's truck is still having an fit with some wiring. We had Lloyd back up there today, cause it's just, and he's baffled by it too. So he wrote down a couple codes on it and stuff and he's not sure, he was gonna go back and look at it and stuff, but, yeah, that truck is becoming a nightmare. But anyway, so hopefully by next month, I'll have prices on a new one to replace that, so we can get that ordered and stuff. It's still, we won't buy it until the following fiscal year, budget starts.
But we get it ordered.
But we get it ordered, we get our slot put in?
Yeah.
You know, in July, so, because if we're, right now, still, if we wait until at the town meeting to order the truck, by the time the truck gets here, we'll have to run his truck at least one, one more winter. Cause we won't be in a slot until, I think he said, until the following year, so.
Tom, it baffles me, the business model that these guys work with. Is each one of these trucks custom built? Why does it take so long to get a truck?
No, because it basically ended up, more or less when the economy slowed, they had a stockpile of trucks, so they basically kinda got rid of the inventory and then the economy started going back up and everybody was ordering, ordering, ordering. There was no trucks available. So now they're trying to get ramped back up and get comp back up. The only one that I know right now who tells me they can get a truck, they're back to normal right now, is Freightliner. Basically, it's not basically the trucks right now, it will be our position to be in the spot to get the body, the plow frame and all that put on. Cause everybody right now is slotted, he's, he's got one spot open in June and he's got two slots open right now in July for putting the body and plow frames on.
So that is sort of custom work.
Well, sort of, you know, the bodies come out of Canada, all the plow frames and all that stuff comes, comes out from there. But the problem is, everybody's ordering their trucks right now, so they're, you know, they're taking up all those slots. So if we wait until July, if, if we actually get our truck in July or August, all those slots are already filled all through the winter. Cause there's guys that got their chassis this, I think, middle part of the summer, they're not slated to get their bodies on until next April. So they're.
Yeah, we don't wanna be in that timeframe.
It's just in time, supply.
So, so, well, I'll give you an example, my new truck, that truck's been sent down there with a plow frame and everything ready to go, with no body on it for three months.
Sounds like it's not quite just in time.
Well, supposedly I should have that truck beginning of November, cause supposedly that body is supposed to be at their shop in Williston by the end of this week.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not just, this whole thing is, it's crazy, the lead time.
Yeah, I just, and, and they've got you, I mean, if you've got, you've got only a couple you can get this from, that, that they sort of don't have to care?
Right.
How long it takes.
Well, there are a few, right, that do bodies.
There is, but the body that we're running right now is the center feed bodies, so there's no, we ain't gotta deal with the side dumps and those, you know, going bad and stuff. And Viking is about one of the best, best ones there is.
Yeah.
Pearlie's truck, his, his body is eight years old and that, it does not have a lick of rust on it.
Wow.
Their paint, the way they do it up in Canada, the way they bake it and stuff is, is awesome. Compared to Mike's truck, which is five years old, that thing, I mean, after the second year, I mean, the paint started peeling off and everything else on some of it, so. But, but anyway, besides that, we've done a few more meters, whether they've been in houses and stuff and Ivan's done a couple water lines that he's installed, a couple meters for us too. But besides that, it's, I think that's about it.
Sand is up, right?
Yep, sand's all done and up.
And you have some springstone stockpiled or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's all ready to go for mud season, hopefully there isn't one.
Yeah.
Got some, some brushwork planned to.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah, thanks Sean. Uh, we do got a brush cutting crew coming in, do some roadside mowing. Uh, they're actually gonna start and do Mackville up through Nichols, all the way out to Dutton.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because that's, that's getting pretty good canopy in there, so they're gonna go out as far as they can go and up 12 feet. So they're gonna do that and then I save a little extra money, cause, you know, we get a little bit of weather here, we're gonna run a chipper so we can buzz around the village and do some cutting and chipping around here, so.
Good.
So we'll go from there.
And the crew got a lot accomplished this summer construction season, particularly with how wet it was on the front, so nice job to the highway.
Yeah, guys did great job this year.
Got a lot done.
Lot of ditch work and stuff, I think the way we split it up with me and the grader and the other guys in the trucks and ditching and, you know, getting the other guys going on the water meter pits and stuff, we.
That was good division of labor.
Yeah.
Great.
So, yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Police department report, we're gonna move over that.
Yeah, well, I got a few points, just a couple points to come off on behalf of the chief.
Yep.
He's, sorry, he had a personal conflict for this evening, but Aaron just asked me to pass along, they do have some, they had a, the radio, the main radio, they have got a determination from Burlington Communications, the base station is not repairable and they're working on getting that replaced. Cost estimate is around $1,500. They do have a loner, so I mean, they got an operating system right now and gonna be looking at the issue of replacement coming into the budgeting talks. So repeater and antenna were repairable and back to functioning right now. Okay, so it's the base. The new cruiser, the update on that is, it's funny, we just talked about the truck, no word on the new cruiser as of yet. He has been steadily checking in with Lamont Valley Ford. I guess the way this works is when Lamont Valley Ford knows there's a vehicle, it's, Um, I guess the way this works is when Lamont Valley Ford knows there's a vehicle, it's, so it is a Ford, obviously, then we'll get a report that, okay, the VIN number, and, you know, the car's born, if you will. So, nothing on that as of yet, which, it's interesting, and it's similar to what Tom was just talking about, it's a 2020, you would think by now they'd have a 2020, but it's a specialty order item, so that...
And we're the only police department in the world that buys it.
I'm sure of it, I'm pretty sure of that, yeah. I'm pretty sure. So, I guess the good news is we aren't waiting for a GM product. I mean, they're hopefully gonna have their issue resolved, but I think we'd be in a lot worse place if we had a GM product. Nothing against the product, but with the strike, it would be an issue. Uh, he asked to also share that, uh, for Halloween, department, um, uh, coverage as normal, uh, would anticipate closing some of the village streets as has been done previously for a short amount of time, uh, for the trick-or-treaters, and then allowing just the local traffic, um, to travel, uh, as needed. So, those are a couple items from the chief.
Great. Thank you. Um, all right, we're to item number one, which is New England Municipal Consultants' Assessor to Present Corrections Needed to a Couple of Tax Bills.
So, to state the truth, we just have one, um, I'll start by introducing myself, some of you who don't know me, my name is Matthew Krajewski, represent New England Municipal Consultants, ultimately your assessor's office, contract assessor's office. Um, the point, uh, which has brought me here this evening, um, we have an errors and omissions to the grand list that we need to present to you. It is a utility value, it's Green Mountain Power, it is basically the telephone poles and the wires that encompass your community here. Um, just to give you a little bit of background, utility values are sent to us by the utility companies themselves in terms of using a state formula to develop, excuse me, to develop that value. Um, the issue is here, in terms of the paperwork that they've sent us for this year, they've changed the format, so the 2017 and 2018 columns were reversed for this year. So the current value, the assessment that we have on the parcel is the 2017 number and not the 2018 number in terms of, uh, what, what we needed to have it as and for the grand list 2019. So basically what we are ultimately asking from you is, um, to correct the value to, um, currently it's $246,400. Um, what we are proposing is the corrected $267,500 is what it needs to be. And again, the paperwork is submitted to us through the utility company, so basically we're just asking your permission here to go ahead and to make that change legally. We do have to send them a change of appraisal notice, uh, by law. Um, in, in the other communities that we service typically, what we'll do is we will certainly mail that out and we will reach out to the utility company to at least make them aware of this. Typically, they understand that, okay, this is the, the value that we had submitted to you, so we don't necessarily see the need to move forward with an appeal, but certainly that is their right, so, um, in terms of us getting out in front of it, I do have a document here, is your approval, I have some additional copies just for you to review here. And if you'd like, I'll just put the record here.
Thanks, Bob.
Ultimately, we are asking just for that change, so we can have that in the grand list 2019.
Why does Green Mountain Power have utility poles in Hardwick? Isn't it Hardwick Electric? Or am I just, is that dumb?
They may have transmission lines.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
There's a big line that goes down through Macville, is that?
I see.
Yeah, could be, I don't really know.
It can, well, we're technically listed as Route 15, but it's, it's technically various, it's scattered throughout the community in terms of the, the poles and wires that they physically own. Um, so again, that's, that's the value that they submit to your community right there. And again, that, it's an issue with just that the two columns from year to year, uh, had basically gotten reversed and that, that older value had been implemented for this year incorrectly.
Yeah, I get that part, I just thought everything was Hardwick Electric in this...
Well, Washington Electric actually comes over into, um...
Oh, really?
Yeah, um, over by Nichols Pond, but it comes into Hardwick
Huh.
from that way, and, um, so, do you know which, Tom?
Washington Electric goes from there, out through, what you were saying, out through Nichols, out through that way. Green Mountain Power goes from the plant out through 115, out towards Morsetown.
From the plant.
Does the transmission line
Yep.
goes through, yeah, goes right
Yeah.
through, because it's through your place, your car, because it's across the road from your place
Across the road, yeah.
and then down
Yeah.
through Macville.
So that's all Green Mountain Power?
No.
Transmission, no?
Washington Electric.
That's Washington.
They kinda switch right there at the substation there, right, right at the light, light department, right there. So Green Mountain feeds in one way and Washington Electric the other way?
Oh.
So they kinda switch right there.
There we go.
The more curious thing for me is that the power company gets to tell you what their tax assessment is. What's the story on that?
I'm sure that's out of statute.
So that, that's done statewide through a formula that the state of Vermont has created, certainly, um...
What part of the state of Vermont, and then what portion of state government?
It would be the, correct, it would be the Public Utility Commission, and I, I believe, I, I can't necessarily tell you the year that that formula was created, um, it, it was created some time ago, certainly, in terms of, of, they've, they've, it's just tough for me to speak on. We work in many communities, so I know certainly in one of our other communities, we're actually challenging the values in the other community, um, based on a, a specialized appraisal in terms of the town had commissioned a private appraiser to do this. We don't see it typically challenged at all, it's something that, um, it, it can be very complicated in terms of the value with something like that, but this is, this is typically done statewide in terms of just implementing ultimately what they send to you.
And in a way, it's interesting that we even tax poles and wires the same way we tax real estate, right? I mean, it's, like, more equipment than real estate.
Yeah, but it's, if it's more like a house than it is
Right, right.
It's, you know, it's planted.
Yeah. It's more like a tree.
To a degree, it's like personal property, it's almost like, in, in this case anyways, with poles and wires, you're almost looking at it like a personal property tax, there's no acreage that's involved with this.
Yeah, I wish, uh, there's a difference of opinion on that.
Not anymore.
So, do you need a motion? Yeah, apparently not.
All right.
To increase it to $21,000.
To approve the errors and omissions request?
Errors and omissions request.
Yeah, well, we do need a motion.
So I'll make that motion that we, um, go ahead and approve the errors and omissions request.
Second.
Anybody have any more questions for Matthew? Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's everybody. Um, thank you very much for bringing this to us.
The other thing I'll mention to you, um, just in terms of our assessor's office downstairs, certainly, um, we, we as the assessors, um, are responsible for two half-days per month in terms of staffing the office. What we've come up with is every first and third Wednesday of the month from 8:30 to 12:30 is when we will be personally staffing the office from the assessor's side. I have been in communication with the town listeners who are also assess, assisting, I should say, with the process, and, um, they're, they're kind of in their own process of just finiting their own hours, but in terms of getting something up on the website, we'll continue to work with Sean's office, with Casey, in terms of getting up, and we just, we wanna create more transparency, certainly, for the community, that if they're looking for any sort of, um, dialogue or correspondence from our office, certainly we want those set hours to, uh, certainly be transparent, so that's the other point that I'll just make while I'm here, certainly.
And how has that been, I mean, just generally, how's it been working to have some office hours, are, are community members utilizing those office hours at all, or are you just doing your work while you're here and...
Yeah, I would say we get, in a community like this, we get very little foot traffic that actually comes through the door. Now, that may be, uh, partially responsible, um, in terms of just our, we don't have those set hours certainly posted currently, so this is why going forward, we do wanna post those hours, so if anybody is confused about when can I actually speak with the assessor, typically most of the communication, the correspondence is coming through email or through telephone. Um, typically, through the clerk's office, we get the majority of the address changes, certainly the property transfers, um, building permits are gonna be submitted to us through Kristin that we certainly work hand-in-hand with in the same office in there, so your community, we, so far anyways, we've seen very little foot traffic and more either telephone correspondence or email correspondence.
Excuse me? Matt, you said first and third Wednesday from 8:30 to 12:30?
Correct. Every first and third Wednesday of the month is when we, the assessors, will certainly be responsible for staffing the office.
And we're still working on listers, um, when their set hours are gonna be?
Correct. I've, I've spoken with them, and I don't wanna necessarily speak for them here at this meeting here tonight. It sounds like Tuesday is kind of part of their plan anyways, if they do, uh, more of a morning there. I know certainly there are busier times of year where if we can kinda, uh, uh, bank some of those hours, because certainly we wanna be cautious about, this is what we have budgeted, this is certainly, you know, the resources that we have to work with, so I know that there's been some talk about a Tuesday. Um, they've also expressed interest, and certainly we're on board with this, to, uh, meet with us at least once a month to just discuss, okay, what is going on, what have you done, what have we seen so far, so just to make sure that we're all on the same page. Um, so I, I, what they had expressed to me was maybe that second Wednesday that we do, technically the third Wednesday of every month, they would look to potentially meet with somebody like myself anyways, and just to go over, this is what we've dealt with so far, these are some concerns that we may have, uh, going forward, this is what needs to be addressed, that type of thing.
So, division of your walking hours, you are, uh, by phone and email?
Correct.
Other regular business hours?
Correct. And if anybody makes a, a specific inquiry and they need us certainly to be available to meet, I mean, certainly we would get back to them in a timely fashion, and, uh, hopefully we could make it work on a day when we typically staff the office, but, uh, once again, there are, there are busier times of year, so I know certainly when we're looking at new construction or building permits, or we're getting in the process of collecting our data for a grand list in any given year, we're certainly gonna, um, make ourselves more available, there's gonna be more hours around those times, just to make sure. I think this year roughly, there were about 90 property checks that we ended up doing. I think they ended up with two grievances, so, um, in, in terms of how many checks we did versus how many appeals that we had, it was, uh, certainly we were happy with it, we'll say that.
So overall, from your perspective, things are going well, well enough?
I would say they're going pretty well. Your community is, uh, uh, we, we, I'll say that we, we work in larger communities, we're certainly, we do see it trafficked more often. I would say that in terms of the size of your community, it's pretty on par with what we typically see of a community this size, just in terms of, uh, people reaching out, wanting questions answered, um, that type of thing, so I, I do believe it's going well so far.
Eric, could you sign one for that?
Oh, perfect, yeah.
I'll take that one back from you, and would you like a copy of the, the signed one, just for your records, or you just wanna...
No.
Okay.
This one, thank you.
Perfect. And I thank you all for your time tonight. Yeah, thank you for coming.
Thanks, Matt.
Appreciate it.
Take care.
All right, next is item two, Select Board to Discuss VCDP Grant for the Oak Barn Project and Resolve to Apply, which I should probably know about, but, um, so we have to, uh...
It's procedural, it's this?
Procedural.
Yes.
We already did this. Sorry, the Select Board already did this, but it's a timing issue.
Right.
It's a document just saying that, um, you wanna apply for the grant and that you have, we have a municipal plan, um, and that Sean...
Oh, but it, we will have a municipal plan.
Yes. Yep, this document says that we have a plan from 2014, and it has a proposed plan scheduled for adoption after we have another public hearing.
Great.
And that Sean is authorized to be the contact person, um, and designated to serve as the authorizing official for, like, the online grant portion of it, to do the application online. It's this document right here.
Yeah, I found it.
So you want a motion to, um...
Uh, to, to adopt this resolution.
Eric, I, I think we're, I don't know that we said this is for the Oak Barn project, we just talked about it in our previous hearing.
I think I did. I read it.
Did you?
Okay, we're back, thank you.
CDP grant for the Oak Barn project.
Yep.
A move that we, uh, resolve to apply and put Sean in charge of taking care of that.
All right. Any discussion on the resolution or the intent or anything like that?
Explain a little bit more, what is, how much is it for?
Oh, yeah.
Is there payback or is that a defund or anything?
Yeah, yeah, so, great questions, thank you. So, um, uh, this application is to Vermont Community Development Program, so, um, this is, we're, um, applying, we're going before the, the board of the VCDP on November the 7th. Um, our application is for a million-dollar grant, um, and that is, um, in part, um, going to be used to match, um, if, you know, all things go to plan, a $3 million grant from EDA, the Federal Economic Development Authority. So, um, it's very important, this is a very important piece of the funding, because we need, um, we need to, it helps provide the match for another part, a very important part of the funding. Um, and, uh, what else, so it's a grant entirely, um, and...
So you're matching town funds or, you know, for this particular grant?
Right, so the match, the, I would need Allison Lowe from NVDA to be completely, to describe it completely, but, um, we're, so the, the major funding components are a $3 million grant from EDA, the federal funding, um, a million-dollar grant from VCDP, a $2 million loan from, um, VITA, Vermont Economic Development Authority. Uh, we discussed this in the, um, the information session prior, but the, because of the organizational structure that's needed for the new market tax credits to happen at the end, the VITA loan is actually not being taken out by the town, it's being taken out by the Northeast Kingdom Development, um, Corporation, which is associated with... NVDA and NCIC, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it, Jay.
Okay, I'm swimming in alphabet soup right here. Uh, but those are, our, our regional development corporation is heavily involved in this, and so it's, so, yeah, so those are the three major funding things, and the loan part is going through the, any, the Northeast Kingdom Development Corporation, and, um...
So this loan is obligating us to put down funds in?
It's a grant.
This particular grant?
It's a grant, it's obligating us to, if we get it...
And we're obligated, I'm just saying.
Right, but if we get it, we're obligated, as far, my understanding is if we get it, we're obligated to spend it on what we say we're gonna spend it on.
Okay.
Uh, which, that's, that's the extent.
It tends to be with grants, supposed to spend them for what you get them for.
Right, but we're not obligating town funds with this, right?
Right, that's pretty much what I was...
Okay, yeah, yeah. And then the only, uh, yeah. So, we're going, I mean, yeah, so we have, the only thing I'll just throw out there just because it does give me, makes me, I, thinking about it, is that, um, we only have 15 minutes to make our pitch to the board on November 7th, and, um, it's pretty tight, but what we've been doing in the lead-up is, um, we've been meeting, um, we have, uh, Christie Farnham from Agency of Commerce and Community Development has been helping us, uh, with a lot of things, but she's, um, been helping us prepare for this, um, presentation to their board, um, Nathan Cleveland, who's like, kind of, I don't know what his title is, but he's sort of shepherd of that program.
Effectively the executive assistant, is how you would probably frame it.
Okay.
I mean, it's...
And he, um, so we've actually done a mock run of our presentation with him and a few others from the agency to get their feedback, to try to make it the best pitch you can make in 15 minutes, which really you can't even make a, you don't even have that long, you wanna answer their questions, so you need to get up, say something very quickly, and then answer their questions, and hope that your application that you've submitted has provided all the detail that they need, and that all your back behind-the-scenes workings have made it so that everybody else at the state, all the state employees who communicate with this board, that they're able to answer the board's questions too, because there, um, there is a prior discussion before we present, and then there's a deliberation afterwards, and so, we, we, our goal is that everything, is that when we're only there 15 minutes, our goal is that everybody else is fully informed too, and this goes.
Okay.
So...
15 minutes for a million dollars?
Yeah. Well, 15, yeah, with, with a two-year buildup, yes. Exactly, or three or whatever, yeah.
Pointing out the whole thing?
Exactly. So, that's the scoop. Motion's on the floor, so, um, any other questions about it? So, all in favor of adopting the resolution for VCDP, VCDP Grant Application Authority, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That's great.
Here's the official one.
I'll be able to tell you, I'll give you a debrief at our next meeting of how it went, standing up in front of them. Yeah. Next is item number three. AT&amp;T/Centor Line, I believe Centor Line is their consultant, request to Select Board, they're requesting Select Board clearance to proceed with an extension of utility services for communications tower along Buffalo Mountain Trail. Do you happen to be from...
Yes.
From which, AT&amp;T or Centor Line or...
I'm from Centor Line and we're a consultant for AT&amp;T.
Okay.
You did?
What'd we...
Janil Smith.
Janil Smith.
My contact information here's in my card. So just kind of an overview of what we're going to be proposing. It's a 184-foot monopole on property owned by Teresa Belavance.
It's 184-foot what?
Monopole.
A monopole, what is that?
It's a self-tower.
It's one pole as opposed to a high bar?
Right, or as opposed to a guide or self-support.
So it's not guided?
Correct.
Really? So a huge monopole is this year?
Basically, yes.
Probably no.
It'll be galvanized.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so that's our proposal. The permitting goes through the Public Utility Commission with an advanced 60-day notice to the town and surrounding property owners and agencies within the state. So in doing our due diligence, we discovered that in order to get to the top of the mountain where we propose to put the pole, we will need to have access through an existing logging road owned by Robert Patton, on property owned by Robert Patton. And to get to that property, we would need to use Buffalo Mountain Road, which is technically a trail. So we are doing an agreement with the Belavances and we're doing an easement agreement with the Pattons. And in order to get utilities to the access route, actually in order to get access to the site, we would need to use Buffalo Mountain Road. So that's why I'm here. I'm here to ask permission to propose that we use this trail in order to get access and utilities from the right-of-way to the Patton's property in order to get up to the Belavance's property.
Do utilities, does utilities imply planning poles and stringing wire?
At this moment, it would be, it's proposed to be underground.
Okay.
Due to the overhead branches, it wouldn't make a lot of sense to put overhead wires up there.
Right.
There might be a point where we would need to get, to go from underground to overground to go over a small river that's existing there on Robert Patton's property. We noticed there's a small stream of water. So we might have to go above ground for a short period, but then directly below ground again.
And below, along or under the trail as well?
That is correct, yes. Or alongside the trail. But technically, it would be access and utility below ground along the trail from the public right-of-way.
Yeah.
What kind of vehicles could we use that trail?
So I believe that, so typical, typical use is off-road vehicles, really. I mean, other than Robert Patton, but if you...
Well, this is where I'm going with this. What kind of vehicles are you going to be putting on that trail and what kind of damage is it going to do? I mean, a trail is sort of a shifty, sort of unstable, you expect it not to be very good. And if you're running big utility company vehicles up and down there, I can imagine a fair amount of wear and tear, to the point where it may be really annoying to Mr. Patton. And who's responsible then for whatever cleanup has to be taken to that trail after your trucks have been there?
A couple of different answers. The first one is about construction. So in order to construct the tower, we would need to bring a crane up there. That would be a one-time access utility vehicle essentially.
How wide, what kind of movement does it have?
We require 20 feet in order to construct and maintain, we generally will ask for a 20-foot wide access. That gives us the room to put a crane up the trail.
Does that trail have a 20-foot wide access?
It, it looks to be about 20 feet now. It's actually a pretty well-maintained access road from the right-of-way to Robert Patton's property. In fact, when we first viewed it, we thought it was a regular right-of-way road. It appears to be very well-maintained and wide. The impact to Robert Patton's property would be greater because it's an existing logging trail with not a lot of improvement. That's, that is an agreement that we're working out with Robert, who wants to do business with us in order to help him get utilities, in fact, to his maple sugar plant there, or his, his building. It's being currently operated on a generator, so...
Question about the, where his maple sugar property is.
It's on our property?
Well, it's a little, there's a little, there's been a lot of talk about that.
The trail has moved. There has been a lot of talk. But I think what, what we, I think, it's been a while since this come up. We've had many discussions with Mr. Patton about that trail, and it's true that he's...
And he hasn't always been really easy to work with on it.
Right. But I think we got to a point where we came to an agreement that...
Where it is now is where it is.
Where it is now is where it is, yeah, exactly. And that it needs to remain open to all legal users of the trail. And I think that we agreed to that, or at least that was the kind of the end of the discussion that I remember, yeah.
So I think what, I think what you're saying here is that you're going to get two days of Patton's property on this access, but then you're going to get off the access and go...
Go across a long road.
Just before Sugar House, is that what you're doing?
That's right. Just before Sugar House, there's a trail that goes over a small, very small waterway. And so that's where I was talking about, where we might have to go above ground for a short period of time to bring utilities over the little river that's there.
Access, a little stream, right?
And so, so our request to the town is to get from the main road up to Robert Patton's logging trail. It appears to be a town trail, so that's why we're requesting it.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's my question about the vehicles you'll need in order to complete this project.
Right. So in order to build it, it's a crane, and then in order to maintain it, I would say approximately once a month, although it's less than that realistically now, we would want to check up on the site or whoever owns the site. We would want to make sure that it's running and, and up to par. It's realistically less than that, but once a month, it would be like an SUV or an F-150. It could be, like for instance, I, when I do site visits, I use a Subaru Forster. So it's really a standard kind of car to get up there. However, during the winter, I, I will bet that just based on my knowledge of the area, we would have to use an ATV if there was an emergency down of the, of the equipment. So we wouldn't routinely do that. We would only do it if it was necessary because the power went down, the equipment went down. And then just knowing how steep it is up there, I would, I would guess that it would be ATV access only after the Sugar House on Robert's land. So as for the town trail, it appears to be, and I've been up there with my Subaru during the winter, and it's totally traversable on Buffalo Mountain Road with a decent all-wheel-drive vehicle. It would only be ATV on the private property.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm not familiar with where Teresa Belavance's land is, is that...
I looked for it in our tax map, couldn't find it.
So the address that we have on file is, it's 283 Cooper Brook Drive. So we could go up Cooper Brook Drive, but then there's no access from basically where Gary Belavance's home is, up to the proposed site, which is a high point on the property, which is necessary to provide adequate coverage. So Robert offered that we could use his access, which is an existing logging road, which would be a much less impact on the environment. Fewer trees would be removed since it's already a logging trail that's been cleared. So it just makes sense for us to use that road already cleared, rather than having to clear an entire different road off of Cooper Brook Road.
So Cooper Brook Road is a private road in Gary's house?
Yep.
Okay. So this is at the very peak of the mountain? It's sort of at a similar level as Patton's house or Sugar House?
Actually, it's up pretty high off of, it's up at the high point of the Belavance property in order to provide adequate coverage. The higher up you go, the more coverage you provide. So, yeah, so our goal is to get up as high as possible. And to get there, we want to impact the trees as little as possible. So going up the logging trail makes so much more sense than clearing an entire different road, having to cut down more trees.
And the goal of this new tower, I thought AT&amp;T was on the tower on Bridgman Hill.
They are.
So is this complimentary or is this getting off that one and moving to this one?
There is no plan to get off of the Bridgman Hill Tower. This is, this is complimentary. It's to provide increased capacity and, and emergency services as well.
So will this assist Route 14 from Hardwick to the East Mountain?
That is correct, yes. Yep.
Really?
Yes.
It can see down that way?
It sees, it'll, at 184 feet, or 180-foot rad center, it would see approximately seven miles.
Even, even over the...
Yeah, you go up the gulf and down over...
To my house in Woodbury, please.
I know, it's line of sight, so any, that's the, that's the real challenge in Vermont, is that everything is line of sight. So we have a lot of trees and we have a lot of hills. So yes, there will be coverage for, for approximately seven miles, but it's not going to be great all the time, especially in the summertime when there's full, full leaves on the trees. It gets better when we have less foliage or less leaves on the trees.
This is part of the G5 rollout thing that I've been hearing about.
There is a 5G component and a FirstNet emergency services component as well. Yes.
What's the emergency services component?
Because our local emergency services have to run their own radios, right?
They do, and, and as part of this rollout, AT&amp;T is offering room on all their towers mapped for local emergency services. And there's a federal mandate known as FirstNet and first, all of AT&amp;T's, AT&amp;T won the bid for the FirstNet project throughout the United States. And so all of AT&amp;T's new-built towers will have this emergency component with availability to all emergency personnel to have room on the tower. So that is an added benefit to the AT&amp;T towers going up now.
We already have it.
I know some responders already have it here in Hardwick.
The FirstNet, the FirstNet?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, that's very likely. Yeah. It's been quite popular.
It's already, already available. Must be available off the current tower up here.
See what it looks like on that page.
No. I didn't see it. Did we? No, I didn't see it.
It was emailed out, but I reprinted, yeah.
I didn't catch it.
I didn't see it.
If you might, I have a sort of preliminary set of zoning drawings here, and they are draft. So I'd be happy to hand them to you. This is the same document that was mailed previously. That's what I have. Okay. It's a plenty to two for them. Okay, yep.
Doesn't matter. I'm commenting.
What am I looking for?
So we'll be creating out a application, initially a 60-day advance notice to the Public Utility Commission. And Hardwick will get notice of that and have an opportunity to provide comment at that time. And then we will get a CPGR certificate of public good through the Public Utility Commission. That's generally how we're getting these permitted, is through 248, Section 248, through state permitting.
So this is...
I was saying, it seems to me, this is the first time I've seen this, so we can't make a decision tonight or anything, I think we need to, at least I would need to have some time to contemplate it. Do we have a process in place for this already?
So I believe though, no, so to clarify, and I could, all were being...
Kristin involved as well?
Well...
Act 248, it's a state issue.
So...
If I'm not mistaken, we're not talking about the tower itself.
All we're talking about is access on the, on the Buffalo Mountain Trail.
My request for tonight, and my request for tonight is to be permitted to propose using Buffalo Mountain Trail to get our access and utilities out when we put out our 60-day advance notice, so that we have legitimate access and utility route proposed to the state agency, the local jurisdiction, et cetera.
And if Buffalo Mountain Trail were a regular town road, would we still be going through the same process?
Absolutely not. We would be able to use any public right-of-way. Town trails are dealt with on a town-by-town basis, and some towns treat them as public rights-of-way. Other towns treat them as something private owned by the town with jurisdiction by the town. There's nothing that I could find in Hardwick that specifically says how Hardwick handles it. So I thought the safest way would be to present it as, hey, we'd like to use this trail as a public right-of-way. Can we propose using this trail as a public right-of-way before we get into our advanced 60-day notice? Just sort of in abundance of caution.
Yeah.
We've always spoken of it as a public right-of-way. I mean, that's, that's the crux of the...
Yeah, so it in fact had been a town highway, a road until the 50s, when it was downgraded to a trail. And it primarily was downgraded to a trail because it's so steep that maintenance was difficult and the town didn't want to deal with it, is my understanding. And so now primary use is off-road vehi, well, other than Robert Patton, is off-road vehicles, like ATVs in the summer and snowmobiles in the winter. And there's some, there's some pedestrian and bicycle traffic.
We believe Patton's, during the, during the, all of the maintenance on it. Now, are we doing any maintenance on that road? We're not doing anything.
We do now.
Robert's done it all.
And tech...
He kept it up, he's kept it up.
Technically, according to our ordinance, anyone working on a class four road or trail needs to exceed permission of the Select Board as well. According to...
So that might be where she's, her request is falling under that perhaps? I don't know.
Well, actually it would if you're proposing, right, if part of it is proposing the utility access, that would be burying lines. That definitely, I think falls under working on the road. But, and that's something that we typically decide, you know, at this level and our, in my tenure on the board, our response has been, yes, but you need to work with our road foreman about...
You just stated it, you put back access.
Right. And, and that Tom will work with you to verify that that's the case typically, right? We've done it before. For like, I'm thinking of the, the Penn Road, that's not a Penn Road.
Up and back though?
Yeah. So...
We live all panel.
Yeah, I know.
Eric, I just put my hands on this this afternoon, but the, that's what I hinted you here, and I apologize to the board, the policy for class four.
And trail.
It's Section 7, we're talking a little bit about this subject matter. Item 7.
Item 7, right-of-way access. Select Board shall control access into the right-of-way for the installation and repair of utilities and for access of driveways, entrances and approaches.
That's the most pertinent section.
Yeah, definitely.
I can necessarily map out the procedure, but I think that's the most pertinent reference.
Right.
The thing that I'm interested in is the business of restoring it as you found it, whatever damage your stuff does. One of, one of the most frequently published pictures of Hardwick shows a huge chunk of granite on a wagon being pulled by something like 14 animals. It's right down here in the village square. The three-story building in the background is what is now the laundromat. If you look carefully, you will see that behind that, there is a little two-wheeled cart on which there are axes and ropes and PBs and, and shovels, which people drawing this, I don't know, it's maybe 20 tons worth of granite, carried behind them to fix the roads and the bridges that the rock destroyed on its way up the road. And that's sort of what I'm thinking is, you know, when your crane is going up and down, I hope it has a little two-wheeled cart behind it that has all this stuff that you need to fix the road back to the way it was.
Yes, and that can be a condition placed on the, on the use of the road as well to maintain or to repair it to its previous condition or to work with the foreman.
Yeah.
Yeah, that can be, that can be, that can be a town condition. Yeah.
They need, they may not say that.
Could you speak briefly to your timeline, so you, when you're going to the, for the certification of it, may you point to that?
So following, following this process and permission to use the road, we would put out a 60-day advance notice, most likely within the next few weeks, before I would say the end of November. And then we have to wait the two-month period... And then we have to wait the two-month period, 60-day period, for public comment, comment from neighbors, comment from Hardwick, comment from the Agency of Natural Resources, which would touch on environmental impact, among other things. And then following that, we put in the application, and it might be a three-month process to get the certificate of public good. So I would anticipate that we would get the certificate of public good early to mid-2020 and construct within the summer to fall of 2020.
As long as nobody freaks out about having a tower, stuff will happen.
So it's happened before.
Which has happened before. Our tower on...
Took a long time to get the tower.
Bridgeman Hill was quite contentious.
Yeah.
But, so...
I mean...
I guess what I would say to that is that the process for expressing your concerns about the tower is the certificate of public good process.
It is. There's a pre-application process built into that. It's a statewide process. So that is the advanced 60-day notice. And within that period of time, all of the adjacent property owners are notified. So anybody touching the property on any side gets notice with a copy of the drawings and a proposal with my contact information. And they're allowed at that point and invited to make comment and give opinions. At that time, the town can become an interested party if the town so desires. And that's when the agency also has room to comment on environmental impact and to request certain review. For instance, if there's a flora or fauna that's protected, then that's a 60-day period of time where neighbors can say, hey, this is what we feel about this. And other stakeholders essentially will be able to give their opinion. That is the pre-application process to the CPG. So that 60-day advance notice is not the application, it's the pre-application, that before we're putting an application into the Public Utility Commission, we're finding out who wants to weigh in on this project.
So this is where we make kind of our decision, and then down the road we get the comments. It sounds like pretty much is what we get. So it seems like we should think about this beyond tonight, in my opinion.
More towers, better. Well, even that, ever since we switched to low-band on the fire department side because of Canada, every day after we got to low-band, our radios for fire departments, they just went suck. And we cannot rely on... It's hard to talk to dispatch anywhere in the village and everything. And we're actually way up in Greensboro for our tower.
Your tower is in Greensboro?
Yeah, it's at the Greensboro Firehouse.
It's a repeater up there?
Yep, yep. I mean, I think Rescue, I think they ended up spending well close to $75,000, I think, for their radios, because they got an antenna up there, then they got one up here, up on top of West Hill.
And the tower on Bridgeman Hill doesn't have the mandate to...
We're actually, I think we're almost higher in Greensboro than that tower is there.
Right.
They're going to charge a whole bunch for us to be on the tower here, I think, if I remember right.
On Bridgeman.
Yes, I think, my memory from years ago...
Well, that's when we were going to be down lower, because AT&amp;T's up here, and then you got the rest of everybody down around, and then you're down a little bit lower. So by the time your antenna gets up on that tower that was up there, we were higher up in Greensboro. It just that most of the time, if we need to contact anybody, we're using our own phones to do it. I mean, I'm constantly on the phone with Lemoyle, talking with them, instead of trying to use radios.
Will there be anything for you in this tower?
I don't know. It'd be something, you know, to look at. I mean, since it's right there in the village, it would probably cover us better, you know, fire department-wise around village area.
But you have cell coverage in the village now? But not radio coverage? Oh, it's a both sketchy.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I can be up on West Hill, and we can be standing up there, and we can look at the tower up there, and we won't have any service.
Can I ask a quick question? Just about the... Do you know, I'm trying to change email information, so I'm glad you can make it. Do you have... I'm just curious, with other installations like this, does the town have an opportunity to work with AT&amp;T about some level of maintenance moving forward? I mean, is that something you guys would consider offering?
Maintenance of the public trail.
To address the... What is this point about, you know, if it gets right up, with you guys doing your maintenance activities, you know, you've got to have some condition to keep moving forward? Is that something we could explore?
We could definitely explore that, yeah.
Okay. I'm just curious.
It's a shame that he's not here, because...
He would have something to say.
Yeah, he could offer some pertinent comments.
I'm having a hard time just envisioning, I mean, this is sort of an aside, I guess, having a hard time envisioning how the tower on Buffalo provides any different coverage than the tower on Bridgeman.
Goes for themselves?
Part of it is because of the complicated terrain. We don't have complete line of sight. Another part of it is capacity.
Or maintenance of the...
Yeah, so part of it is line of sight and part of it is capacity. So the system gets overwhelmed with a certain number of users on the tower, and that's why sometimes the coverage is so sketchy, even though you can actually see line of sight to the antennas.
But it's a lot to do with the tower and the equipment on the tower, right?
Well, it's both. There's only so much you can do with one tower.
So what were you looking for from us today, tonight? When you walked in, what were you hoping you would walk out with?
Permission to propose to the Public Utility Commission and to the town of Hardwick use of the town trail as a public right-of-way to bring our utilities and access up, so that we can put the advance notice in and start the pre-application process.
How much would it take you back if we took until November 7th to make a decision?
The number of weeks that it would be from now to then.
Yeah. Yeah. The other thing that's... That's just niggling in the back of my mind is the idea, so I think that part of our discussions with Mr. Patton over the years stem from...
Maintenance of the trail.
The trail and whether, what kind of development we should have on a town trail that we don't maintain. And there's some tension around developing, you know, encouraging any kind of development on a Class 4 road or a trail that's not maintained, and then people are coming to the town with complaints about various things on the trail, and because they're trying to use it as primary access to their business or their home or something like this. It seems to me that adding utilities along that, it potentially encourages more development on the town trail. Just as something that I'm thinking about as we're talking this through.
That is a road that is... It's not like some of the other roads where they could be turned into a decent road, like that road is like straight up, there is a stream on one side, a cliff on the other side. I mean, it could with a lot of effort, but you know, it's not...
We don't want it back as a Class 3 road.
Correct.
Right, we're not looking forward to that, yeah.
Right, even though it really is right now in pretty good condition, right up to Robert Patton's, because he's put a lot of time and effort into it. It's... And, you know, we do maintain some steep roads in town, Tom's crew does, that we wish we didn't maintain.
That's why I'm wrong.
Yeah, but we don't really want to be in the business of taking on more roads that are actually too steep. Because, you know, we wouldn't want to look at this and think about upgrading that road back to a... The trail back to a road, I don't think.
Well, I mean, you won't have to, right?
I know.
And saying, oh, this is the way it's going to stay, this is the way it's...
Correct. And I suppose also the way to control development is really through adherence to our zoning ordinances and bylaws.
But if this doesn't go through our zoning ordinances and bylaws, this particular thing, then we don't have recourse.
No, I was thinking more about like, my earlier comment that running utilities encourages more development, but really you should be, we should be controlling that through our zoning administration. Right? So if it's not appropriate to have a house on a Class 4 road or trail, then that's the point at which you deal with that.
Well, it sounds like we're not nixing the project or anything by putting it off two weeks, we're just making sure that we have our brains wrapped around this thing, and we've had a chance to, you know, take time to actually look at this thing, read it, and with our, you know, with the correct glasses on or whatever.
But the other point, too, is that we do want to give the town's attorney the opportunity to offer some input. I mean, this is obviously a pretty legal issue, so we want to make sure we get her input from the town's attorney as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that just makes sense to me.
So we push to the...
And we'll probably come up with more questions.
We're going to push you to the seventh.
Number seven?
Yeah. Same time, same place.
Same channel.
Same channel.
Same channel.
HCTV.
Same cast of characters.
Maybe an addition.
Yeah, there may be, maybe another one.
All right, and by that point...
In the meantime, I am available to answer questions.
Great, and you have your contacts.
And we have your email address in the... Put it out of the correspondence with you and Kristen, or you and Casey and Sean.
Yeah.
Yes.
Great.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we're not more decisive tonight.
That's okay. Is there any other questions that you'd like me to answer now while I'm here?
What's the life expectancy of one of these towers? And are you likely to replace it when it's dead?
The lease is for 30 years, and it is expected to last 30 years. And when it's dead, they're...
Obsolete.
Obsolete, yeah. Generally, generally, it would... It depends on the lease terms, and we haven't fully come to, you know, it's all dependent on the lease terms, and we haven't fully negotiated the lease, but generally, we're moved to a footbowl grade, something along those lines.
So what we are theoretically looking at is... Regular use of that trail to monitor and maintain this for the next 30 years.
Regular being like monthly?
Yeah.
That's correct. I would project it, yes, I would say, assume it's going to be there for the 30-year lease term. Yeah, yeah.
Although, we're all not sure, remember, that 30 years... This technology is going to be so antiquated.
Seriously, I mean, 30 years is a long time, but at the same time, it goes by very quickly. So, and there are towers that were built in the early 90s that are still up and running. So there's a lot, there is unpredictability about what the technology is going to do. And these are built to standards, current structural standards, and expected to last at least the 30 years. And as far as use of the trail goes, from a leasing standpoint, it should be anticipated that it would last the life of the lease.
Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, one other question while you're here. So, am I right in thinking in contrast to Rinker's Tower on Bridgeman Hill, this is going to be an AT&amp;T tower, so maybe it's not a tower where they're leasing space to a lot of other providers? Or is that a possibility that leasing space to whoever, I mean, not just whoever, but other people who are also in radio communications?
Very good chance of leasing space. It is designed to be co-locatable, and we would likely, it would likely support an additional three carriers. That's generally what is expected. So you might have just AT&amp;T on there at first, but it's likely that other carriers would come along later.
And then where on the total poll, as it were, would the emergency services sit? Would they be... Do you happen to know that detail?
Sure, it depends first, it's usually first come, first served. So it's first in time, first in right, like most real estate. So if a fire department comes right after AT&amp;T gets installed or before and wants to put their proposed emergency service antennas on the tower as part of the proposal, then they would likely be second in time, so directly below AT&amp;T.
How's this tie back in with the... I'm sorry, I lost the phrase, but what was the phrase you mentioned, that federally we're obligated to improve communications for emergency response services?
That's FirstNet.
So you said this is FirstNet, but I'm confused now by your statement about, well, the fire department now has to come and apply for it. How does that tie back to the FirstNet concept?
So FirstNet is a federal mandate that tells the states that they have to have emergency services available in rural areas. And traditionally, there's been a lack of this because AT&amp;T, Verizon, they don't necessarily want to go into rural communities, because they might have 100 customers or 20 customers, and it doesn't make commercial sense to bring the facility to this rural community. And as a result, emergency services and people suffer because there's no access. So FirstNet comes in, it's a congressional mandate, and says, look, statewide, nationwide, you have to make these emergency services available...
Self-service services.
Yeah, to everybody. And it doesn't matter if it's going to make you money or not, people are suffering. And so Vermont adopted, Vermont's governor adopted FirstNet. So each state was given the opportunity to either adopt FirstNet or to create their own alternative to FirstNet. Every single state adopted FirstNet. So, coming back to your question, Sean, individual personnel have to apply for it and also subscribe to it, but it has to be available to them.
I understand.
Available at a fee?
Yes, there is a fee. Yeah, there is.
Okay, I see.
Just that when I start dialing on my phone, it basically says, I have priority.
Your priority.
Or anybody else, so I will get to it.
Okay.
High demand, high demand time hits, calls for our radio services or, you know, for one antenna up there, that's something totally different.
So it's through this element where, I see.
So you were saying that, when you were talking about that they would be the second one down, you weren't talking about FirstNet, you were talking about if they want to put like a radio...
Then they're a fire, for example.
Well, FirstNet is just a mandate, that's just local.
And that's on your AT&amp;T, that's through your AT&amp;T antenna, I think that's going to be at the top of the tower.
Yeah, AT&amp;T will get the first spot, because they're owning the tower or they're the applicant of the tower. They actually could sell the tower to another built-to-suit firm.
But one of the same issues is that there's AT&amp;T and FirstNet are the same... AT&amp;T is like providing the FirstNet service on their AT&amp;T portion of the tower.
No.
No?
No. AT&amp;T has their own antennas, and as part of their contract, they won the RFP or the bid in order to build the network nationwide. And so they get the top spot for commercial purposes, but they have to offer to emergency services the opportunity to be on that tower. And if Verizon were to come first, then they might have the second spot, but if the emergency services were to come first, then they would have the first spot.
So FirstNet has to actually contract with you for a place on the tower?
The local fire department has to contract with you for a place on the tower for the FirstNet, so it's not just a given?
That's correct, yes. It has to be available.
Okay, so it might not be super great if it doesn't get jumped on right away, if it's like a real low part on the tower, like up here.
So, yeah, so what we're doing pretty routinely is proposing emergency services on the tower, just saying, future emergency services, propose it on the tower, if there is an interest in the local community, which most of the time, there has been, or a lot of the time.
And so if we already have it off of this tower, it may not be, it may not be sense for us to also have it on the...
Oh, it would make sense. Yeah, you want... What I'm hearing is that it's not reliable completely, and the more towers, the better when it comes to emergency services, because we might be below the tree line, we might be at capacity, there's any number of reasons that one tower isn't going to completely meet all that emergency services needs. If there was a big emergency, too, then you can almost guarantee that the facilities would be overwhelmed. And actually, that did happen in 9/11, and that's kind of what spurred this whole...
I thought that was the point of FirstNet.
Exactly.
That the first responders can talk when it shuts other people down instead, right?
Yes, right, exactly. And so when you have a big emergency, when the network is going to be overwhelmed, then it's better to have more towers.
Doug, you have a question?
Yes, I'm with the newspaper here. You have mentioned two things here. You've mentioned there's a capacity situation with Bridgeman Hill, and you also mentioned a 5G component with this new tower. Now, my question is that if this new tower is not put in place, does that affect... does that affect our position in terms of being shuffled and when 5G becomes a part of an offering that AT&amp;T would have to the area? In other words, if Richmond Hill is our only tower, does that mean that we would have less priority for 5G than if we had two towers in town?
The more towers, the more capacity, the more opportunity for devices, just overall. So yes, the more towers, the more customers that can be served, whether that's emergency or commercial.
Okay, so it would increase priority in other words to have a second tower in terms of like, I assume there's a list of priorities that AT&amp;T has of which towns will, will get 5G first like in the other utility.
I think they have been working, they, they had a crank here on hell, they've been working towards 5G up here. Cause I think we've been notified that we're going to have to switch over our, all that new software that we got for one Bridgman stuff, you know, for, for our water alerts and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to have to update that because it's 5, 5G.
Yes, so it is common, and this probably touches on your question, but it, it seems relevant, that it is common for a carrier to upgrade their antennas to the new network, like the new technology. So, yeah, I, I don't know if AT&amp;T has proposed to upgrade their antennas at Richmond Hill, I don't know that, but they certainly can. And that's something that they do routinely is upgrade their antennas. So they can build a new tower with a new technology and then they can also upgrade their antennas on old towers.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we've got to wait until next time.
Yeah.
We're going to do some homework.
Great, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you so much for having me. I look forward to seeing you on the seventh.
Great.
In the meantime, if there are questions, then you have my contact information, I'd be happy to talk with you.
Great, thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so next is item number four, which is A, no request, which I, and I'm going to take as stab the East Hardwick Neighborhood Organization.
Correct.
Is that correct? Otherwise known as A, no. To, they're requesting use of sidewalk location in the area of future library, future library, former, right?
Trying to re-up it.
Re-up it. See the old, uh, water, see the old East Hardwick Fire District Building?
Yeah.
See the old office, they're trying.
Former.
Turn it into a library.
It wasn't a library in the past, so.
Oh, it wasn't?
Apparently.
Yeah, it was.
It had been used as one, but it's the Water District, Fire and Water District Building, no?
It was downstairs and I think the library was upstairs.
Cheryl Michaels reached out to me this afternoon and just asked if I, she couldn't attend tonight because she's at the vaudeville performance actually, and she just asked if I could read back a statement, which I just got here.
All right, you can put it in their package.
Oh, excellent. Thank you, Casey. The, the, the main point here is, want me to just continue here?
Yeah, carry on.
Okay, so it's a tight, it's tight on the property boundaries and they're talking about doing some improvements to secure the building coming into this winter season. So they have a contractor lined up and the specific request here is, just if I can read this quickly, the East Hardwick Neighborhood Organization has received donations to secure it is library and firehouse building in the village at one eleven Main. They're going to crib the foundation, put on a new roof, fix some broken windows in the next couple of weeks, again, to keep ahead of it coming into the winter season. The building is owned by the East Hardwick Fire District and it sits on a small piece of land. There's some land in the front of the building and they have been working with the neighbors, you know, in regards to the upcoming project. So in order to crib the foundation, we need to bring all railroad ties, steel beams and other supports into the basement, which is accessed from the driveway of a neighbor's property. And there's limited room, the key point is this, there's limited room in the driveway to, you know, have supplies that they're going to need for the project, which is going to run a limited amount of time, no more than a week, they're saying a couple of days here. But what they're asking of the select board is, we'd have to use a, put a truck and perhaps a trailer on the sidewalk area in order to bring in the ties and beams. The truck would be there only while the crew is working. We expect this will take one to two days, work being done by Jeff Montgomery Construction, East Hardwick License Contractor, has insurances in place. So what they're specifically asking is, would the select board allow for the contractor to effectively stage and use that little sidewalk space out front on the main street side of the building? That's the ask.
Are we going to hear from people in East Hardwick that were blocking the sidewalk? We hear a lot about the sidewalk.
I think they're in pretty good conversation with all of the neighbors and everybody knows that this little project is going on and it's pretty exciting that they're actually going to save it because I think, I don't know that it would have made it through another winter.
And they were able to raise the fifteen hundred dollars needed in something like a week?
To stabilize it.
To stabilize it.
So I, I can't imagine that anybody's going to complain.
And how long was that rig sitting in front of the village diner or just off to the side of the village diner, completely occupying the sidewalk on a major state highway?
But it was only during the business hours when people would be using it. At night it wasn't that bad.
Yeah. Do you want a motion to prove that they do this project, they have up to a week?
Cause they think they need a couple of days, but.
Just be careful, sometimes the weather can mess you up on such a hard day.
Give them two weeks. Give them two weeks to get it done and, and clear things up, you know?
Do you see any problem with that, Tom? Okay. So you, you're making a motion?
I'm seconded.
Yeah, I made that motion.
You made that motion. Casey, you got that slippery motion? Was moving a little bit?
They have to complete their project with a two-week time frame.
Yeah.
Using. Use the sidewalk.
Using the sidewalk, yeah.
Maybe we frame it, you know, from the time they start, cause I don't know actually what their start date is.
Right.
Give them a good window.
That's right.
Is that understood?
Well, yeah.
Okay, that's understood. Okay, thank you.
We don't know when it is.
Sorry, I'm not for the group, but I'm speaking on behalf of the group.
All right, any other discussion on that? All on paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next is Casey to present quarter one financials for fiscal year 2020. We're already through first quarter.
I'm closer, you're having fun.
Yeah, I guess so. Going to warm up the machine?
Yeah.
So is there, well, while that's warming up, it did say future, is, there's a, not only to save this building, is there an idea to, to use it for some library?
As a community space.
Community space, oh, okay, yeah.
They're anticipating sort of a run-it-yourself little library. They're not anticipating, as far as I know, they're not anticipating hiring a professional. But they want to have it as a community space, a meeting space, and just save a little building in the village.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a little.
Well, they could be useful.
It's a little.
Little, tiny.
It's like the size of a room, really.
Like this.
Yeah.
I mean, compared to.
It's like twenty by twenty.
It's like a car width or something.
Right.
Well, they must have parked a fire rig in there at some point.
No, they parked, they did, they parked a car, car. It's now up at the depot.
A horse cart.
Hose cart.
I see a hose cart.
Hose cart, right.
Back in the day.
Well, it was horse drawn, but then it was, it was upgraded for.
A truck.
A truck and they had a Jeep, somebody had a Jeep that they would attach this hose cart to and take it to the fire and attach it to the fire hydrant and that was their fire department. And they had four different nozzles depending on, I mean, it was, it was as good as you could get with what they had to work with.
High technology.
Right.
All right, so now we're looking at.
All right, so the first page is revenues. Nothing real exciting. Of course, the current property taxes looks huge because everything's been billed and we haven't paid the school yet, so that's why it looks like that. So the only thing really kind of, at this point, everything should sort of be at twenty-five percent. I will note, recording fees are at forty-six percent, right here. And of course, at the time we did our budget, we didn't know that the recording fee per page was going from ten to fifteen dollars. So it's an additional five dollars a page.
Fifty percent bump.
Yeah. So already, you know, one quarter in, we're about halfway there.
Fifty percent over.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
So, and same on zoning, if I'm looking at that right? Zoning permits?
Yeah.
I mean, smaller dollar amount, but also fifty percent.
Right, but, yeah. So, um, that's, that's about it.
We're a little light on dog licenses, aren't we?
Yeah, but he's going to.
Yeah, he's been out.
Well, dog licenses is because that is in, what, April? So we won't.
Oh, no.
And so, yeah, I mean, those are, they're not due until, I think, April.
Right, right.
So, yeah, we haven't really gotten anything back. Um, and that's about it there.
But the warrants affect that, but there's not that many.
Right, so that's kind of the, there isn't really much other revenues. So interests on investments, when we budget this year, I will be budgeting significantly higher. I don't even know, like, in the past, it's only been about five hundred dollars. It should be a lot more because we have that CD and union that we share with the library. And then of course, we have our regular money market account that earns a fair amount. So this is certainly way too low. So we're, that's going to be high, high. So, um, water sewer transfers are just normal stuff. Then we get into, now we're into expenses. So I have just a few notes here, a few highlights. All right, so a couple that were, that looked high. This hundred percent here is, that's all the supplies to do our tax billing. So that's, that's completely normal. Those things won't need to be purchased again this year. What else was my other notes?
So really only over forty-one bucks, which is what, point four percent over?
Yeah.
But the total in the end comes to twenty-four for that department?
Correct. Well, for all of this, this is all of office.
Yeah.
And then like Lister Supplies, for instance, shows sixty-three percent. Well, they had to get a bunch of cartridges and things to start the year, so that's, it's perfectly fine. But overall, the, the department is at twenty-four percent there.
Right on target.
Other payroll, a lot of that we haven't paid out yet this year, because it's paid out twice a year. Building expenses, nothing too significant. I mean, we had to, the Moria Building Elevators is seventy-five percent because we have to pay our annual support fee right off in the beginning of the year and that's like a thousand bucks. Let's see what I have for notes. Memorial Building Repairs and Maintenance is at thirty-seven percent. We just spent some money to repair a bunch of broken windows that was a necessity. So nothing too exciting there.
We did fix.
That is exciting.
We fixed the overhead lights in the town clerk's office, so those are a lot better.
All LED, who did those?
We are right now troubleshooting some alarm systems, so that's something coming at us. You know, we're trying to take care of some, you know, do the preventative maintenance things, you know, just to keep things up to snuff.
It'd be interesting to see if there's any change in the heating costs now that those windows aren't leaking.
I said the same thing. I was like, you know, I just wonder if we're going to notice in our office even if the cold air coming through and, because we have the storm windows down, plus the cracks are all gone. I mean, in Amanda's office alone, there were probably ten broken windows, like.
Ten individual.
So they all got fixed?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Except for the records room, which we discovered, we thought about that earlier tonight.
Yeah, so, um, so police department, overall is at like twenty percent. So they're, they're on target.
Okay.
Fire department has started to purchasing some equipment, but overall twenty-one percent. Highway, so the gravel is at eighty-five percent, but that's because that was all purchased this summer, used. So there'll be a little bit more before, but, I mean, then we'll be going into next fiscal year, right? You've got a lot more to buy?
No.
No, so, okay.
Some of the gravel's for the crushing.
Right, yeah, yeah.
We were up on that last year because he said that we were, he was anticipating that the, the overall cost was going to go up and it stayed the same this year.
Really?
But it's good.
What about the ditch stone?
Okay, let's hear. So it's way over, we are getting back several thousand dollars in the grant.
Right.
Better backroads grant for Hardwick Farms. So we bill it all to that, though we'll have grant income to supplement that.
Start some of that.
The contract mowing is eighty-two, but that's done, that's done this year. We won't have more expense there. Then we get into like the rest of the highway department and the stuff that you see as a hundred percent is because equipment repair and expense, we just do the combined seventy thousand, but when I actually book the expense, I book it to the particular truck or whatever, so we can actually track what vehicle is, you know, costing money or whatnot. So they're at twenty-four percent, so on target. And then we get into like appropriations, not everybody's reflected their money.
Yeah, right.
Line items.
County taxes are paid.
Yep, county taxes are paid and they were slightly less than we budgeted for.
Yeah, they're close.
Very close, ninety-three percent. And then, what else?
Line item.
Line items are at twenty-six percent, so right there. So our tax sale expense is more than we anticipated because of the properties we had to buy back in August.
Yeah.
And then we get into, so recreation is at thirteen percent. They have some, they have some maintenance stuff like permitting for the playground and such that, and I've, I've spoken to Suzanne and so they're basically going to just offset with her salary. She'll, you know, what they budgeted for her salary, she'll work less hours to compensate that they went over in maintenance, so that they don't go over the total budget in the end. And trails is on target, they're at twenty percent. So overall, total expenditure is twenty-four point three four percent. Ideally, we're a quarter of the way through, so we should be at about twenty-five percent. So first quarter doing okay.
Yep.
Any questions?
Good, it shows that our budget was close.
Our auditors are coming to do the audit next week. They will be here all week.
I always feel like the auditors are either they're coming or they're here, or we're getting their report and we're talking about it and then they're coming and I feel like.
They're never gone.
Right.
So they are, they're coming on Monday, they'll be here all week.
If we feel like that, you definitely feel like that.
Yeah, right.
So, okay.
Just for, just to go, they're to, we, we're waiting for them to review, so we get the official closeout for the previous fiscal year. Right, so that, we're just not in a position yet.
Yeah, because it was my first full year, I really wanted to have them kind of take a look at things before I.
Before you give us the closeout?
Yeah.
Initial indication is really close.
The punchline is we're close, right?
We're really close.
Like, from my numbers, we're at like ninety-seven or ninety-eight percent.
So very close to what we're.
Very, very close, yes.
Which is fine.
Yeah.
Where we should be.
That's what you want to do.
Yeah.
Little bit above, little bit below, something near your target, that's good.
That's the preliminary.
You didn't have to bottle that paint, right, Tom?
No, it's this truck breaking down.
You know, if you go back and look, you know, about here, you're going to see Pearly Truck where it spent over seven grand.
Oh, and Mike's too, wasn't it? Right.
No, I have the Greater.
Oh, the Greater.
Well, the Greater, well, the bulk of that's tires.
And Pearly, seventy-three hundred.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And, yeah.
And, um, as I'll note here, Culverts is another situation with ditch stone. We'll get reimbursed for a bunch of that for the Hardwick Farms grant, for the backroad for that.
I'll just say that that backroads program, I think was, it was really good that we jumped on that early.
Oh, God, yeah, because I think even after this, I'll still have money left for next spring to use.
Because when we first started looking at that, there were a lot of towns who were balking and they were saying, oh my God, the state's going to come in and they're going to mandate all this stuff. And we said, you know what? They're going to mandate it whether we like it or not, let's join.
Well, like Doug said, we're probably one of the few towns that actually jump on it and get it done in the fall. Instead of, he said, he's got a lot of talent that just, no, we don't want to, we'll just, we'll put it off to the next year.
And, and.
Sorry, go ahead. It's just that if I know, if I get a section done, I know what I can work with next spring and still spend that extra money. With them, if they do that one project in the spring or late, late summer, day before it goes bye-bye.
Right.
Where are they going to do the rest of it?
Right, you didn't use, yeah.
What I was going to say is the work on the Hardwick Farms project was completed just before a heavy intensity rain event and the ditch functioned perfectly. I mean, there was no washout, we didn't lose any part of the road. I mean, talking to test, it worked really well.
The tangent bombs were working good and stuff. The tension bombs were working good, so.
So, it's good.
Right, and so the nice thing is that a lot of this is stuff that is good for our highway infrastructure to be doing anyway.
Yeah.
And that, that there's a program that allows us to access some funding for it. We gotta do that while we can, while it's available.
Yeah, we're getting close to fifteen thousand, almost. Fifteen to sixteen thousand from them. Retired contributor of around five grand or so.
Right.
Who wrote that grant?
No, no, this is just something that they are giving to us, or each town is given an allotment of money if they so choose to take it.
But we had to first...
Not all towns chose to.
Right, not all towns will do it.
So we had to hire a consultant to identify all our hydraulic, hydrologically connected segments.
Connected segments.
So we did that early on.
And did the grant then pay for that?
Yes.
Okay.
So it was a lot of work identifying, they're short segments, right? They're like...
Each segment is two hundred, two hundred small feet.
But there are like seventy of them.
Oh, there are tons of them.
Yeah.
Right. I think we've got over three hundred and small segments.
Yeah.
Something like that.
And so, and to be able to access this program, you have to have done that work first.
Correct.
So we jumped on it right away, and said, let's get this done, because then we can access this funding for stuff that the state wants us to do, that we wanna do because it improves our roads.
Right. This is part of that Clean Water Act. You know, anything between seven and ten percent or more than ten percent too, we have to have done within the next five years. And that's what basically we've been concentrating on, those priority lists.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's been, also been a good way to prioritize projects.
And everybody wins.
Yeah, well, absolutely.
Everybody who plays.
Yeah.
Well, I think...
If you're a town that doesn't play, you don't win.
But, but if you are downstream from us, even if you don't play, the water that's coming at you is better than it would have been if we hadn't played.
Right. But for us, particularly, like, for our roads that are steep, it's helpful.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But it brings me back to a request that the taxpayers pay a lot of money to run this town, but there's also a lot of outside money that comes ultimately from taxpayers, but there are other taxpayers with a little bit that comes from us. And I think it would be useful in the town report to show total amount spent running this town and how much of it did not come out of the taxpayers' pockets. You know, this, this kind of grant, Sean is writing grants, you know, John was writing grants all the time, Aaron writes grants for equipment and stuff like that. All of that is part of the cost of running this town that does not come directly out of the taxpayers' money, taxpayers' pockets here.
So for a lot of that stuff, it does show up as a revenue line in our budget. So it is apparent in the town report for a lot of it.
If you're used to reading those things.
If you know how to look for it, it's there.
I'm saying that the pie chart where it shows this percentage comes from grants, this percentage comes from other revenue. Yeah, I know what you're saying.
And we have other things too, like the, like our Memorial Valley Rail Trail and the Yellow Barn Project where we're accessing a bunch of grant money and private donations and things that all provide an economic impact to the town.
That are not...
Those are not gonna show up on it because they're not part of the budget. It's a total side project.
So that's another pie chart, or that's, that's another sort of...
Yeah, for, yep.
Just, just, so people get understanding, lots of us are, don't do numbers well. I say that inclusively.
So you're thinking it'd be nice to have a method for communicating that in our next town report?
Exactly.
We could work on that, yeah.
They do.
Set the place we could work, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah?
That'd be interesting.
Great. Thank you, Casey.
Yep.
Next is item number six. It is Select Board Authorization of Vermont Economic Development Authority Form 4A. This is back to the Yellow Barn Project, and this is Vermont Economic Development Authority. They're the ones that were asking for the Tumengar loan, and that's going to their board next Friday. And this is a form that I think essentially says that this project complies with the town plan and, or the town plan that we intend, that we anticipate adopting soon.
Yeah, which, next week, no?
The sixth, November the sixth.
November the sixth.
Yeah, the sixth.
I think is what...
That's correct, November sixth.
Thirty days from the last.
That's correct.
The longer we're here, the more my contacts dry out and the less I can read stuff that's close up, but...
So do you need a motion to...
I'm just looking to see, are we signing this, or do we want to have a motion for Sean to sign this? Oh, it's Select Board's gonna sign it.
Yes, yeah.
So we're basically, so this is a part of a larger application to VEDA, and this is basically the town of Hardwick saying, after study of the proposed project, say, review of municipal ordinances and applicable land use plans and general study of the effects of the proposed project or industrial park upon the municipality and region in which it is to be located, here with submitted following findings from VEDA that the project will not violate existing zoning ordinances, land plans, and be located in a district, the mixed highway use district, that the project or industrial park is in accord with duly adopted municipal land use plan, and that it will involve...
Will not.
Will not involve unusual costs to the community. And that it's in, that it is in the best interest of the community for the following reasons, and is supported by the Select Board. So basically, we're saying we support the project and that it complies with our ordinances and plan and all that as part of the overall application.
So do you want a motion to authorize the Vermont Economic Development Authority Form 4A?
Yes, please.
So I move, I move that.
Okay, all right. Any discussion on the, on this application?
So it looks like from this application, the, any water and sewer costs will be part of the wrapped up in the project cost rather than the town doing that?
Yeah, yeah, and then, yes. And there's perhaps an even more complicated answer if you want it, but yes.
Sure, go for it.
No, the part is that it implies, it's, it, it goes along with our town plan as it's written.
Well, you got part of this, but the other part is if there are any unusual costs.
Right.
We're saying, yeah.
I think the context here, my opinion on that motion is, the context is, we, we know we're gonna have to extend the water and the wastewater service. We already know that. It's not like we have to build a wastewater treatment facility to house, you know, to receive the wastewater, so it's not unusual. That's, that's kind of how I've been thinking about this.
But it's gonna be a new water and sewer connection.
It's a new connection.
That we would handle in the same way that we would do a new water and sewer connection.
So there's a second part to this, and that is, with, with the tenants that are gonna be coming in, they're gonna have to apply to the town for their water and their wastewater. So we're gonna go through that process, and there's gonna be a pertinent connection fee paid to the town for that capacity.
And if they're...
Okay.
If they're big enough, waste users, then we're also gonna have the State Department of something potentially weigh in.
Waste, wastewater management division?
If they, if it's predicted that they'll exceed, that their total flow exceeds five percent of the capacity of the plant, then they have to have a plan that the state approves to, and then they might have to, a business going in might have to do some mitigation, like they might have to have a holding tank, so instead of getting a big bowl as all at once, the sewer plant, it trickles in over a longer period of time or something. So, like...
So what this is saying is that they would bear that cost, and it's not the...
Well, this isn't saying that generally, but that is right and correct. That's the plan.
I think it's important to note that this, this thing, the pre-treatment discussion, and depending on what tenant comes in, has been talked about up to this point with James Cole, and he's actually had these conversations with the prospective tenants, so they're informed. You know, they know this is gonna be a cost you're gonna have to bear coming in. So, it's not gonna be a surprise, is the point.
Right. All right. More discussion. All in favor of, of signing off on VEDA Form 4A? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have one that we're...
Yeah, I did run the strike through and unfortunately it didn't show up because it was a red strike through, so I just did it by hand here. So this is the one that we consider official.
Okay.
And it's the strikeout, so the pertinent statement, if it's an is or is not, or it's properly identified on this one, Eric.
Okay, great. Oh, minutes.
Those are for you, Eric.
Oh, minutes, yay. Where are we? Select Board Reports?
Select Reporters. The, this is the first year that all Vaudeville shows, and they started tonight, are pre-sold out.
Oh my. So if you don't have a ticket, look for the scalpers.
You don't have a ticket, go on Front Porch Forum and hope that somebody needs to sell one.
Or go to the, they're serving food at the front.
They have the Euro server, I don't remember the guy's name, but there's a food truck up there. You can go up there before the show. You don't have to be going to the show if you wanna go and have something that's otherwise built.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
But it's exciting because they, you know, they often sell out one or two of the nights, but this is when they sold all, all shows out. So that's pretty exciting for them and for the townhouse. And then I heard from the community foundation that they have decided that they won't be using Hardwick Townhouse for their annual meeting this year, their grant meeting, because they were in Hardwick two years ago, so maybe next year.
They're spreading the love around the state.
Yeah, and, which is okay, because we were talking about trying to extend the season in order to accommodate them, and so maybe by next year we'll be better prepared for that. But there is, after Vaudeville this weekend, there's a benefit for the Reach Program, the Russ and Dewey's Show.
Oh, yeah.
It's the first weekend of November, but I don't remember.
Second.
Which day. I don't know.
I think it's November first here.
Is it?
Oh.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a Friday night, okay. So, but after that, then the townhouse will essentially close down for the season until...
But that'll be, that'll be a much softer process with the...
With the glycol, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be much easier.
Though you do have to drain all the...
The bathrooms.
Yeah, the bathrooms.
But still, that's, yeah.
Yeah, less of a process.
It's gonna be better, yeah. So that's what's happening at the townhouse. And then Sean reported on our pedestrian and traffic safety task force information.
So we have that.
I'm not the spokesman for the group, to be clear.
We got that covered. We're working on that, and that's all I got. I don't have any solid waste district news.
Can you report on painting on that?
The painting of the depot is done. Ninety-nine point nine percent. There is one little edging that the painter failed to notice, and he will take care of it. We, the historical society will be open for walk-in traffic for one more week, and after that, it will be by appointment only. I wanna thank the community for the wonderful response we got for the coin drop last Saturday. The thing that stands out, stood out to all of us as we were counting the money, was how many twenty-dollar bills people dropped in the bucket. And I just take that as a wonderful pat on the back that what we're doing is, is meeting the approval of the community, and that's perfect. Thank you.
Any other Select Board Reports? Any new business? Yeah?
Yeah, I forgot to remind everybody to vote for Chief Cochrane for the Judy Vine Library fundraiser.
And they can vote through October twenty-fifth, is that right?
Twenty-five, sounds right.
Either at the library or at the Galaxy bookstore.
Okay, you can vote Galaxy too.
You can go to Galaxy too.
So early, vote often, right?
For Chief Cochrane.
It's a live situation where you can vote as many times as you want. It's pretty fun. You can vote for everybody multiple times.
But vote for Chief Cochrane.
I think he's in the running. I think I saw it from Port Forum.
Oh, was there a posting of...
I think there was, yeah.
Oh, how's Sean doing?
I don't remember.
Sean who?
All right.
That's for a great cause in all seriousness, so folks, throw your votes in the air. It's for a good cause.
Oh, jeez, old business. I still haven't, Jody Lou Smith came and requested a letter of support from, here, the Select Board that I still need to write. I'm just letting you know that I'm remiss in my place, so now everyone knows.